My recommendation to frame out from like that exterior wall, frame out with a two by four wall, sheet rocket, and then within this report it talks about SHPO and they would want whatever texture is in the courthouse, we want to emulate that look on those walls. So those kind of things, they didn't anticipate in that seven million dollar cost because they just, they don't know what we want to do. Honestly, I don't think we know what we want to do at this point, how we want to split those offices up, if we want to split them up. So things like carpet and all that is not included. When I went through the report, I noticed, um, the two things that I noticed that they had, um, that they're working on giving me some prices, is they didn't do any, uh, they didn't anticipate doing any of the underground plumbing in the basement, and we know it's, needs to be, I would definitely replace it. I would cut that floor out, dig it out, replace it. So they're giving me a cost for that, and they didn't, um, uh, they didn't recognize anything with the front steps, you know, the front steps. We had just got done, uh, patching them. I guess Will did a pretty good job. They thought they looked in great shape. But when he was actually, when you go down into the justice piece, he found a hole back underneath there. So we know they, that would be an additional cost as well. A couple of things we need to keep in mind is, they identified in the report, uh, SHPO is going to want the building in a, use in this light manner. So offices and things like that, which is our, our goal. We won't, you couldn't, they wouldn't accept it if we were to do a remodel and make it into something totally different than it is served now.
So no racquetball court?
No racquetball court, dang it. Football. Some of the things will have to stay. They're, they anticipated, SHPO, SHPO were going to tell us, like, when you walk into the main entryway, they have all that metal up above, they're going to make us stay with that, which is, to me, is what the courthouse is, is that metal. The dome, the dome will have to be refurbished. They're not going to allow us, and I don't think anyone would want it anyway, the dome to be removed. So those kind of things, we know we have to stay with. I talked about framing out the walls. If we do that, window seals are identified as, as well, the front mezzanine. So if we pull that wall out and we stud it, we have to do light carpentry work. So however that window in the courthouse is cased, we're going to extend those windows out perhaps. We have to case them with light craftsmanship and materials if possible. So if that is a pine or walnut, uh, SHPO will want us to do those exact same things. But like, once again, that's not in that cost estimate because they don't know if we want to insulate our walls. To me, it's the only way to go because money's saved in the future and what an easy way. We know there's not adequate electrical in there because, I don't know, back then, didn't need a lot of plug-ins. But we're going to add those. That's a great way to add. So, um, within that seven million dollars, they have things like twenty to twenty-five percent of the exterior cracks in the building to be repaired, um, ADA entrances to be repaired. They're looking to repair about fifty percent of the walls downstairs in the basement where you see all those cracks running through, um, replace about fifty percent of the plumbing. They recognize that the old galvanized line, some of it's copper, some of it's galvanized. They want to replace about fifty percent of that plumbing. Um, trying to go quickly here, uh, they, the elevator, they recognized some repairs, but they didn't feel needed to be replaced. Um, what else do I have? All right. That's basically kind of in a, if somebody doesn't sleep well at night, I got a four hundred page document. I will leave it up with Courtney. You want to look through it? They did send me a second copy, and it's, it's actually pretty interesting, but it's pretty big, too. Anyway, is there any questions on that, on that cost? And we, they cannot provide us anything else because we don't have a plan. Um, I'm not sure if I mentioned, but part of that cost, I think I said about the abatement. Uh, recommendations, I think we should do is we should proceed with a lead paint, uh, asbestos survey right away. Elizabeth will give us money to do that, or however we need to. But I think we, that's something we should do, then we can kind of define a little bit more some of these costs.
Can, can we, uh, look into the southwestern, uh, Brownsfield for some of this, do you think? We don't own it, but we weren't responsible for what?
I think we are.
I think we are because we built the building.
Yes, because that was, that was the sticking.
Oh, gotcha.
That was the sticking point with the whole annex buildings. We were noted as the generator, so we, we sold it to somebody else and they could, they qualify. But as the county is the generator of the problem, we have to repair ourselves.
Okay.
But the seven million dollars, and you discussed the other, that's the starting point.
Yes.
Yeah, we're, it, this could.
It'll be lower than under ten.
Actually, it was less than I thought it was going to start out at.
But where are we going to get the, the money to do this?
Well, that's our next point of discussion. And just on the asbestos, lead paint, uh, whatever, if you want to go ahead and get me an estimated cost, we can bring that forward at the next meeting for discussion. So in the backup documentation that I provided to you, there's a page that looks like this. It has color on it, and it's titled Information on the Historic Courthouse Renovation. Okay? Um, so in this, I cited NRS three fifty-four and talked about fund for construction of capital projects and the limitation on the amount of money transferred to certain funds. So we can transfer, uh, up to ten percent of our budgeted expenditures for the general fund, plus any money transferred from the general fund other than money transferred to capital improvements. We can transfer ten percent of that amount. So if you remember, I had to pass a resolution probably a month or month and a half ago to transfer seven hundred and fifty thousand from the general fund this year, uh, to capital improvements to help fund this project. Um, and so this, this table, under the highlighted things, outlines what those costs look like and what those revenues could be. So when I, when I look at what amount we are allowed to transfer this year, we can transfer one point six million from our general fund to capital improvements, which means I can still transfer another eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars if that is the preference of the county commission. I should be knowing what our net proceeds of minerals look like very shortly, and this might help make that decision. For FY twenty-two, uh, at the point I wrote this document, uh, the tentative general fund expense was seventeen point six million, and we take out the, the contingency and the seven hundred and fifty thousand scheduled the next year for transfer, and then we take ten percent of what's left and we can transfer another one point six million, um, over to the capital improvements fund. So if you go to the next page, then we see that the available resources from FY twenty, um, is one point six million, and the additional revenues projected for capital improvements are ninety-five thousand. In FY twenty-two, we have another one point six million that we can transfer from the general fund, and we have projected revenues in capital improvements of three hundred and nine thousand. We have a current fund balance in capital improvements of four hundred and eighty-five thousand. So you have, uh, at the end of six thirty twenty-two, there's an estimated four point one million dollars that you will have available. Now, mind you, as we go into this process, it's going to be a bit before we get through the initial phase and construction actually starts. Um, so with an estimated cost without remodel, as Bill pointed out, of seven point one million, and an available estimated resources of four point one million, we need to come up with another three million dollars, and that does not include remodel. Now, one of the things that was mentioned to me early on is that there is a potential, there is grant money out there for renovation of historic buildings, and they can be substantial. We can start looking at that. We can also start looking at what else we may be able to do to come up with additional revenues to fund this. Um, so, um...
Can, can you cover, um, cons, so we have a comparative, uh, the, the construction costs for the new courthouse will kind of give you an idea of?
Sure, sure. So the square footage of the two buildings is about equivalent.
I think it's pretty close, yeah.
Okay, for the new courthouse excluding the jail portion and the historic courthouse, your square footages are the same. Okay, so your construction costs are, without the first phase, just what we're doing in the second phase, so it doesn't include all the groundwork we did in the first phase, are about seventeen million dollars for that new facility. Then if you add first phase, you're going to take that up to about eighteen million. And then when you add soft costs in, you're looking at between twenty and twenty-one million dollars for the new courthouse. So if we renovate as opposed to building new to provide the office space we need, your actually renovation, although expensive, is going to be a more cost-effective option than looking at buildings being new.
I think you're right in that fifty percent area, and the majority of those costs that are identified in the report is earthquake, to me, current code. That's, that's the expensive one here.
And the other part on your estimate, too, which nobody's factoring in here, is what's happened to the price of materials, lumber, labor, that's coming up.
Right.
So this, this particular number is going to just go out of sight. So you're looking at seven million, just, we've seen the price of lumber and all the other stuff double or quadruple. So you're looking down the road of what little, what looks like seven million dollars or even eighteen. You're, you can go twenty percent or more. You're looking at some major, major money. We've allocated some of our net proceeds money that we've done in the past to the, the Justice Center. So we only receive so much in, in net proceeds, which we don't know from year to year. It's been pretty good. I think this year will be okay. But what's in, what's in the future? As we look at the, at the cost or in the expense to renovate this, and nobody wants to do that more than me, believe me, but it's going to be, it's going to be astronomical, to be honest with you. It's going to, it's going to take this seven million dollar figure to twenty million dollars at least. And so you're looking, just like you said, compared to the Justice Center and this one here. This project is going to cost us more per square foot than the Justice Center did, simply on wages and materials. No doubt about it because it's already happening. And the price of gas and all the other stuff that goes into it, as we look, we can look at a seven million dollar figure today, that's not going to be the same figure we're going to look at two years down the road. It's just not going to happen. Now, as we look at that building and we look at, everybody wants it to do new. I'm just throwing a question out there. What, what if we made that a museum? And we, uh, we tried to look at other constructions for, uh, different offices, or some of the offices downstairs that might not be able to be feasible, be able to be done because of ADA access and asbestos, cracks in the wall, all these other things that are going into it. Can we squeeze some of those offices somewhere else and maybe keep our assessor's treasures out?
Firstly, you have, you're going to have two offices over there.
Yeah.
That are not going to have a home, right? Treasures and the recorders, I need to do something. And then based on what the commission does, we'll be hiring a new IT engineer. Where will he be housed? If you're going to contemplate a county manager, there's no office. Um, we don't have any space for that. I, to my assumption, especially with you, I know the commission would like to have their own office as well, so when they need people to have a place that they can. So in my opinion right now, we're already short, um, we're already short square footages of office.
Well, that's, and then it's going to be another place. You're going to have to go in with probably close to half to three quarters to bring it up. Otherwise, especially with heating and cooling, uh, plumbing.
HVAC replacement is, which is a big dollar amount. That isn't, it's within, it's within that seven million. I didn't, I, I'm sorry, I didn't address all of them, but there's so many points to figure out. But that's in there.
Personally, for me, if I'm looking down the road in the big picture, I think that we ought to think about the possibility of selling the admin and using some of the funds and possibly on a smaller scale, build over there. And then that way, um, we're adjusting our costs so far as long-term, putting in newer stuff, and I think that we can better house, um, those individuals that are out of the admin that, that will be stuck for moving.
On that point?
I really think that we need to, we need to explore it.
Right. Because that, when that was brought before the commission, uh, Elizabeth presented that contemplation of that building over there.
Right.
I don't think we discussed possible funding sources.
No, it was just shot down.
And I, I think it's fairly substantial, and my safe to say that, that the county wouldn't have to come up with that total. I know how it with me, but we presented a total cost. I don't remember what it was, what that anticipated cost for that building was, but it was, I think there's a pretty good percentage of funding available.
Here's my critique on that. We discussed it a bit. We're into that admin building, seven, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's already built, spent, paid for, and it's state-of-the-art. We put a lot of money into that building. For us to build another, to say, sell that building, this is where I, I differ in, in you. To sell that building, to build the exact same building again, at these rate, you're looking at probably three, four million, based on the number that we got for the possible building down here, five million. So why would you sell a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar building, state-of-the-art that you put a lot of money into, to turn around and buy another new building that's going to cost you three or four times as much money? That's, that's kind of where I'm at. We've got that, and we've got people in there. We've got them all housed. And some of the, uh, conversation we had last meeting was, yeah, we can maybe move a couple.
We ought to put it on the agenda.
Well, yeah, we can discuss it, but that's my, I just kind of threw that out there because a lot of these numbers are, they're just exploding.
The price is going to go up. We know the seven million is a fix. We know.
I don't think it's going to be as bad. I think that once packing companies and lumber places get back to where they have.
And once you're stuck with, you're stuck with a shortage of offices.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, when you bring a report like this to the public and it, you, it's noted ADA and deficiencies and things like that.
Yeah.
That's a part of the bad thing, bringing it forward.
I don't want to sound excessively optimistic, but, um, and not to just flop up Elizabeth, but you've demonstrated a pretty good competency in finding resources for funding for these kind of things. I've, this isn't stressing me out. It, it is going to be expensive. I'm going to guess it's probably going to shoot up to ten or twelve million.
Market curve.
With, uh, with renovations and all of that, and so, uh, but I, I, I'm looking into grants for historic renovations. I think we'll find the money.
I do, too.
I really. And we've got to think, you know, we've done a really good job, I think, over the last few years of, of not being short-sighted, but thinking long-term and, and, and so the more we can do to make sure that our building is maintained well, for long-term. Um, I'm willing to entertain possibly selling out of the building. The market is very hot right now. I don't know how well it's doing for commercial. Um, I don't know. So that, that would be worth looking into.
And we're anticipating, I'm going to say by the time you get an architect engineer, go through that process, year, year and a half, get a construction company here. I think we're looking more like five years if you started today.
Yeah.
It's, it's a long process.
Yeah, it's worth, it's worth exploring for long-term, but in the meantime, let's get this building out to stock.
Well, as, as, as we're going to move on, because we, we got items on here, I think this discussion should be agendized, you're right. We'll, we'll agendize it and discuss it as we go down the road because there's a lot more input that's going to come. We still got to get that. So let's, let's kind of drop it right here. Not drop it, let's just kind of leave it for this part of the discussion and then bring it up, because like you said, three to five years or whatever we're taking here. The expense is going to be there. That's a beautiful building. That's our community. That's, that's the county seat. So let's, let's bring this back to agendize items and get more information, more dollars and stuff like that. And we'll have discussions over the next six, seven, eight months and to see where we're going once we find out what more costs might be. And, uh, so, uh, that, maybe, being at that, we'll just kind of move on to the next, what you have.
I'll get, I'll get some pricing, so you know, I'll get some pricing for a lead and asbestos survey, and, and I will, and then with that survey, we can get an estimate of cost when we identify. And the other thing I'll do is, at the next department head meeting, we'll kind of have the building laid out and just see how it fits, how the square footage is going to fit with, with what we currently need to.
Good idea.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Elizabeth.
Thanks, Bill. Okay, and then in conjunction with that item is your next bullet point is lease space for the treasure recorder's office during the renovation. So we don't know when that's going to start or, or how that will happen, but I have been investigating what that might, cost might look like. I have, I'm still waiting on several return calls. One of the, I only saw one space that would house one of the offices because I pulled our needs assessment from two thousand and eleven that told me what their current square footage is, and I'm trying to find a lease space that is similar to what that two thousand and eleven report showed. And so I still have a few more realtors I need to, uh, talk to. Um, but I will have numbers for that, um, for your next meeting. Uh, the potential county manager position. Okay, so that you asked me to bring back at this meeting, and behind the documentation, or in front of the documentation we just looked at, is a, a sheet that is the, it's right in front of that, uh, page that I just just gave you, and it says, "The County Manager." It's that one we just passed, Ian. So there you go. I can see here, so I can't tell where we left that. Um, so the, what I did is I went ahead and I took that, uh, total salary down based on the recommendation from, um, Ian and Travis, that when we were discussing this earlier. So I took it down to, um, from a hundred and twenty-five thousand, down twenty-seven thousand dollars to ninety-eight thousand. So the budget looks like, um, from what we initially had to the change as, as recommended by, um, Ian and Travis, a hundred and fifty-two thousand. I brought this back because again, I, I do believe that this is a, a position that should be considered for the county. And I know that, you know, we need to look at the overall budget, but I do believe you need to strongly start considering this position. Um, it has not been added into your budget at this point. So these things that are down here below that we're discussing now are things that are not added into the budget. Um, okay, and then we had interlocal agreement analysis for White Pine County Fire Protection District. Um, so I have to go ahead and do that analysis. I kind of wait for the end of the budget to come up so I can see what those numbers are going to be. There is agreement between White Pine County and the White Pine County Fire Protection District to offer human resources, technology, maintenance, legal, all those different types of support. But because they're a separate legal entity, instead of through the central services allocation, we have to do that through the interlocal agreement. So I will evaluate that and have that number for you at your next meeting. Um, updated projects list for the fire district. So at this point, I believe that Brett has had time to put together a proposed, uh, list of station projects, correct? Did you want to come up here and talk about these at all?
I don't want to come up here if you were there.
No.
Man, Bill, we're going to have a lot for the day.
Did you want to? Let's see.
It looks like right now our main focus is going to be on doing electric heat and just using the propane as backup to try and knock the heating costs down. Uh, there's not a whole lot of big stuff that needs done, like the parking lots we did before, bathroom renovations. So it's, well, this list is kind of just odds and ends. A lot of them can be done in-house as, as maintenance, as time.
We don't have, yeah, we don't have the budget next year that we've had in the past. So we went around to the, um, um, we have Lackawanna, we didn't have Lackawanna on here, but we went down, uh, the three of us took a road trip is what we did, and, uh, talked about upgrading the outage, um, uh, showers, if maybe, and basically just trying to stretch where we could with upgrades in the buildings that are needed and then would help enhance, uh, moving forward with, um, uh, the cost overall.
Yeah. And we discussed that notification for the grounds.
Right, and very timely is the USDA notification that there are grants for energy efficiency upgrades.
Yes.
In rural areas. So we fit right into that.
Light fixtures.
Yep.
Yeah, light fixtures.
So that could, yeah, cover the heating and upgrades so that we have electric heat, which will save a lot because propane kills us every year. Use the propane as backup, the light fixtures, everything, insulation, whatever we need to do.
Then we have a couple of coat things that we need to do, so far as tubes and steps and that type of stuff.
Right.
Yeah.
So I would recommend that we don't put these, any of these into next year's budget, although I will include them in the capital improvement plan through grant applications. And that we go ahead and aggressively pursue these USDA grants for energy efficiency in rural areas. I think it just is a perfect fit for that grant. Whether or not we'll get them, I don't know, but we certainly should pursue that avenue first.
And, uh, we've already identified some HVAC units that we're going to, within the general fund, that will add to this grant application as well.
Yeah.
Get your showers on here, too.
Is, is that concrete, not a baker? Did you guys take a look at that? What was it? Three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars?
I would only recommend replacing one small section of it. It's starting on this spar. We can take care of that. I, on our road trip, I think a lot of these things are always, we can handle in-house, you know, and, um, and some of them will have to go out, you know, like if, the, with the grant application, it's going to knock off eighty percent of probably what we did, because we were looking at upgrades of that from a hundred to two hundred and a half fixtures, and then doing the primary heat as electric and secondary. So a lot of our list kind of falls away. There's still some things on there, but.
I think it's good that you've done the trip. That's great.
I did, too.
And showing that we're, we're staying true to our word as far as the improvements to the outlying areas and, and going forward to making whatever we can each year based on the money available and grant money. And we show good faith that we are working with the, within the fire district to upgrade each and every one of our, and over a period of time, we'll get them all done. But, uh, doing this, what you guys did, and just kind of whittling it down, is really a good step forward because we're able to stay within budget and knowing we're going to come back and finish this stuff, but we can't do it all at one time. So I think.
We can take advantage of that grant.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Perfect.
Perfect timing. So anyways, uh, that was the update on that.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the next item that we have that, uh, is just for, uh, discussion is, uh, the budget for the agriculture extension. Uh, you have not had opportunity to discuss this with, uh, the university, and Holly Gasky is on the phone right now so that she has the opportunity to discuss, uh, what they're requesting and what's in the budget documents. And those are the last two pages in the packet I handed out, is the spreadsheets that she provided us, to us early on in the budget process. So, um, hi, Holly, if you would like to go ahead and discuss the budget or you have any additional information, or the county commission has any questions for Holly.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Holly Gasky for the record. Um, the budget I put forward to you covers for Angela, the halftime and in assistance time. Um, it also covers a basic operating cost within the office and program, you know, some traveling expenses and after, uh, extension activities, which includes the after-school program, new programming. And, um, basically we have the opportunity to upgrade, um, our IT abilities there for internet and video conferencing. There's a grant there that requires a fifteen percent match. That's that strange line item that under other expenses match for distance learning. Um, and that's twenty-four sixty. And then, um, we are looking at, uh, hiring a livestock specialist across the state with, um, different county inputs. Um, with your high activity of livestock activities for four age, there's a huge benefit. Um, knowing it's a tight budget, we haven't put in a lot, but five hundred dollars means that there's participation from, um, White Pine, which means we can, um, direct some of the activities that that specialist can come in, create some programming at a higher level for our youth, to give them opportunities, um, to be able to, uh, address raising their animals at a, a more professional level, learn more, and, uh, engage them in more regional and statewide as well as potentially national activities. So that's what that five hundred dollars is for. Um, this budget is very much set out in hopes of us, uh, discussing a similar arrangement lease-wise, um, in, in cost at least, um, and, um, uh, for space and, um, and, uh, let's see, is there anything else? Oh, uh, one thing I know that you guys have been asking, when do we get a new extension educator? Um, I am saddened to say that when they require the budget, twelve percent cuts out of us at the university level, every position that we didn't have actively going had to be put on there, a permanent position. Um, as of right now, it looks like the legislation is going to approve the twelve percent budget cut, um, for the university, um, which filtered down to extension. Um, there is a chance of maybe something changing in a summer session with that, depending on how many federal funds come forward and all kinds of different variables. We have no idea how that'll filter down to extension. I, um, we basically have cut every position to be filled except for, there is a few other counties, because this is top priority to have county extension educators in, in each location. Um, other locations that had county funds in, um, in balances that we could borrow and use. Um, other locations that had county funds in, um, in balances that we could borrow and use for a year or two, we have done that. So right now I'm hiring temporary type positions in, um, Turquille, in Lander, and in Nye. And just to let you know, that is-